So just as a reminder, please turn off your cell phones or silence them if that has not already been done. Your purpose here is to hear from the candidates, so let's focus on their voices only. Please remain seated and silent during the Q and A unless you are writing, submitting a question. As moderator, I will stop the debate if the audience interrupts. Interruptions reduce the time for candidates to speak, and we are here to listen to the candidates. To repeat, League policy permits only authorized recordings of these forums. Taking clips or segments is not authorized, and this forum will be posted on our League of Women Voters of Port Washington YouTube channel this week before the election. Any and audience member who violates the agreed procedures for the forum or who disrupts the forum by ignoring these audience expectations may be asked to leave. We drew straws this evening, and it looks like Ms. Deridge Witten is going to be first. Please hold your applause until the end of the forum. We have assembled to hear from these candidates this evening. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Is this working? You can hear it? Okay, thank you. And thank you to the League for offering such an important forum for everyone to get to really find out about the candidates. I enjoy visiting you each year, and I appreciate all the time that you put in to making sure that this is done in a very secure and positive and professional way. And thank you all for being here tonight. I know it is, it's something that you came out, you know, at 5:00 on a weeknight to come and learn about your possible future electives and electeds. I am presently the legislator for the 11th district in Nassau County. My district consists of Glen Cove, Seacliff, Glenwood Landing, Roslyn Harbor, the Village of Roslyn, Port Washington, and Sands Point. So I basically, essentially, it wraps around Hempstead Harbor. Just real quick, the way that the county is set up, it's divided into 19 different districts. So there are almost two jobs as a legislator. One is to represent your district, and the other is to be part of the government, you know, for the entire Nassau County. Nassau County is almost $4 billion budget, and we have different committees, and I'm proud to say I'm on the Rules Committee, which consists of the contracts. I'm also ranking on Public Safety and Health, and it's really an interesting job. We deal with a lot of different, everything from infrastructure to opioid issues to just safety to our budget, which is a big, a big thing that I feel that I've been a part of. We've really cleaned up corruption in the time that I've been there. I came in, and there was really no procurement, and we, there was too many people got in trouble, honestly, in Nassau County, and I didn't want to see that. It was a waste of money. It ruined people's lives. It was not the way government should run. So I've been proud of my colleagues. We've put in a number of backups, not only with the forums, which really disclose pretty much everything that you have to disclose, and we don't do a contract without the disclosures, but we also created an office of an inspector general who looks at every contract. And I feel very proud of both of those accomplishments. Since we've put these mechanisms in place, there hasn't been one article or one real, real delving into issue as to whether or not there's been any type of corruption. So I'm proud of that. So it's, I love my job. I've enjoyed it, and I was, I've been lucky because I represent a great district, and I look forward to continuing, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Salzer.
Good evening. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters as well, and I'd like to thank, thank everybody here in the audience for attending tonight. Julia did a great job of talking about the district that we are seeking to represent or currently represent. A little bit of background about myself, I'm a new face. I am not elected official. Most of my government experience has to do with village-oriented procedures. I was, for over 10 years, I was the chair for the Environmental Commission for the Village of Seacliff, and I had held other appointed positions within the village, but nothing that was elected. So I'm a brand-new face to you guys. I, a little bit of background, I grew up here in Manhasset. For the past 30 years, I've been an environmental, yeah, environmental scientist. And so the aspects that I'm looking to do as a legislator in the 11th district is primarily, as Julia had talked about, the fact that the district absolutely surrounds, it's a horseshoe that surrounds Hempstead Harbor. And I boat there, my kids swim, they boat, water skiing, fishing, and so the Hempstead Harbor really means a lot to me and my family and everybody I know. As an environmental scientist, I'm looking to advance those aspects of, of the harbor. One of the things I'm here to say is that I don't have an agenda that I am looking to push forward as, as a potentially elected legislator. My agenda is more for a, more general background in this day and era when things are sort of, oh, let's say, unsensical, to put some more common sense into a position within, within Nassau County. And that and the other aspect that I push forward, since I've spent so much time dealing with environmental impact statements and other aspects that deal with community character. So I also am looking at aspects of local governance when it comes to developments and other aspects within the community. Thank you.
We're going to begin our first question. This will be, the first person will be Mr. Salzer. With rising populations and the environmental impacts of climate change, what are your opinions on, what are your opinions on building apartments and large, and particularly large condominiums on the town of North Hempstead coastlines and overdeveloping our local towns and villages?
So, oh, that was loud. One of the things that really pertain to me is community character. So if we look at the district as a whole, I know this pertains to the town of North Hempstead particularly, but, you know, the district as a whole goes from, from Glen Cove, which is a city, all the way over to Sands Point. Each community is different in its own right, whether it be Sands Point, Port Washington, Roslyn, Flower Hill, Seacliff, Glenwood Landing. Each has sort of its own unique character. Those particular areas, I think, should be governed by their own desire to see what they want to see. So in other words, Port Washington, in other words, they, it's a, it's pretty dense already, right? Where Sands Point's not going to, I can't see Sands Point as being a place where they would want to allow dense development. Port Washington is already rather dense, and I suppose developers have a way of really putting together positions where they can, you know, build up higher or more densely or smaller apartments or something like that. But I don't believe that the county should take part in those decisions rather than the local government.
Ms. Deridge Witten?
Yes, I, I basically agree. I actually wrote an op-ed going against the governor, which is, you know, my own party, but I, I was very concerned when we thought that the state was going to come in and tell local municipalities where they would have to change the zoning to build different apartments. Yes, I, I have three kids and one, I have one stepson, and I would love for them to be able to afford to live on Long Island. However, it has to be done in a very smart way, and I also agree that the zoning and, and different, you know, plans do have to be controlled by zoning and planning boards of local municipalities. I was, I, I met with Sutherland, and I heard what they were proposing, and honestly, after my first meeting with them, I didn't meet with them again. I was worried about, first of all, the traffic is an issue, but also the safety, having a pretty major road like Shore Road, for instance, if you're going to put a development there, you really wouldn't, you really wouldn't want it to have that turn right off of Shore Road. I think it would have been extremely dangerous with the hill. There was also environmental reasons and density and height, and there was, I really couldn't think of many reasons in it that I would be in favor of it. And just, if anyone ever Googles me, they know that I was very much opposed to the towers in Glen Cove also, the RXR project. I was in favor of developing the area, but in a way that fit into the community. Thank you.
Ms. Deridge Witten, what do you think are the primary goals, fiscal, monetary, and management responsibilities of a town council member?
Well.
County legislator.
Okay, no problem. I was a city councilwoman for two terms also. So I, I think that basically, I, I've been raised by someone, my father was the mayor of Glen Cove, and I was raised from the time I was young to understand that it's not our money, it's, it's, it's the people's money, and it's really a very, like, very high honor to be put in trust of that, and I take that very seriously. So again, with trying to eliminate corruption, which really is a hidden tax, when you have, when you have corruption, you're really losing money. So I was very much in support of trying to clean up our procurement as much as possible. I feel that we really, really have. I also think, I, I was ranking on finance for a long time too, and we just did the budget, and you really have to look into the nitty-gritty of the budget to find things. And one of the things I just found at this last budget hearing, you know, they're, they have a very high reserve in the county right now, it's almost $1 billion, and that's great because it helps with our Moody's rating, but then come to find out that 400,000 of that million, one, one, I'm sorry, 100 million, I'm sorry, 400 million of that 1 billion, 1 million is for opioid settlement, and the county's holding on to that money right now. They're not dispersing it. And the other, almost 300 million, is for COVID release, and they're holding on to that money also. So you need to find this because I'm very concerned about it. It's helping their Moody's rating, but it's money that really needs to go out to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Salzer?
So the primary thing that the legislator does is to assure financial security and, and to weed out corruption. I agree with Julia on that aspect. The monies that, so Julia knows more than I do. She's a legislator, I'm not, so I can't get into specifics of it all. However, I'm assuming this money for opioid stuff is our grants? No, they're not. But there's, you know, I, I think the procurement process is something that has to be looked at, and also, you know, fiscal responsibility is something I would definitely take a very hard look at.
We're going to take a pause for one moment. I'm going to bring in Julia.
So somebody has put candidate signs, campaign signs, all around the parking lot. This is the UUC, it is private property, just an FYI, you cannot put campaign signs on private property without the owner's permission. So whoever did this, or anybody who might be interested in those people, should go out now and remove the signs. This is a formal complaint from both the League and the UUC. Thank you.
Nobody's something after it?
I, I didn't put them out. I did notice one. Tony, do you mind grabbing that one sign that's out there that's ours? Again, I didn't put it out there, but I was kind of not sure what to do with that.
All right, thank you. We're going to continue. Mr. Salzer, what are your opinions about taking public land, for example, parkland, wetlands, shorelands, for private development? For example, what's happening in, in Great Neck Park?
I do not know exactly what's happening in Great Neck Park, and I really have no position on it. It's not even in the district.
Are you able to answer questions regarding the taking of, or the question of taking public land for private development?
So private development, taking public land, I really don't have a clue what that means. If the, if a government entity or municipality wants to sell it to somebody, that's another aspect, but a taking of public land for private development doesn't make any sense to me.
Ms. Deridge Witten?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what the taking part means, if it's for sale, but the bottom line is, I know with parkland, we have to be extremely careful. When you alienate parkland, there's a lot of federal requirements that come into that type of situation. They have, they're very, very against it, which I respect because I'm a big open-space person. I believe the general idea, I ran into this on Manor Haven Boulevard because we were putting in sidewalks when we redid that road, and we were slightly short of the four feet that was required to do the handicap-accessible sidewalks. So the idea of possibly taking a couple of inches from the town came up, and we ended up doing it a different way because it really is quite difficult to get any type of alienation. You have to have another, the same exact square footage found somewhere else. There's a lot involved. So I'm surprised that that's even really being considered unless, again, it's a voluntary sale, but I really don't like to see that happen. I think we need to get more parkland. I like the open space bonding that the county's done in the past, and I fully support holding on to whatever open space and parkland that we have. And honestly, unless it was something really needed, I can't see myself supporting that situation.
Ms. Deridge Witten, New York State and Nassau County have an affordable housing crisis. Ignoring all the levels of government you may disagree with, what do you want Nassau County to do?
Well, I think people know, I, I don't like what's going on in the hub in Nassau County, which is the center part of Nassau County. I voted against the idea of a casino, and there's such acreage there that I really think that that would be a very good place to, to have a very transit-central, next-generation slash possibly senior slash veteran housing opportunity for at least part of that, of that property. There was a plan prior to the casino that mentioned that, as, as also with various biotech companies coming in. We already had Solen Kettering come in. So I think there are places in Nassau County, there aren't a lot because there isn't a lot of open space left, but there are places that I see that we could really, really focus on next-generation housing. And I do, I know the need, and I would love to see it, and I'd love to keep our young people here, but it has to be done in a very incremental, you know, well-thought-out way.
So I'm a big believer in the free market, and developers who are going to develop something are going to develop it in such a manner as for them to make money. The amount of other environmental impacts to community character about building affordable housing that could be sustained for our younger population is, is quite daunting. The other aspect is, you know, there's things like traffic that would be advanced as more housing units get built and other things like that. I had a real problem getting here this evening, as a matter of fact, Northern Boulevard. So those kind of considerations are important towards the character of different communities around Long Island. There are communities around Long Island that can sustain some further development, but, you know, that's a case-by-case basis and not something that should be dictated by a county. I believe that should be dictated more by the local municipalities.
Mr. Salzer, can you describe the present situation regarding redistricting? Please offer your opinion on the current lawsuit involving redistricting.
I hate redistricting. I think the districts are incredibly complicated, and they shouldn't be. I understand that they're done by population, and then there's back and forth about how many Democrats and how many Republicans and whatever else is going on there. I believe more in districting that pertains to either municipalities or school districts or some other districting that already exists in an area rather than weeding out certain people or certain blocks of people within a community where, you know, a community is split up into two different districts or, or three. So I'm not a big fan of redistrict, redistricting. Don't have an opinion on the lawsuit because I don't really know enough about the lawsuit to speak competently about it.
This is the second time I've lived through redistricting in Nassau County, and it's amazing the amount of effort that is made, and it kind of gives you pause because you realize that the reason that there's so much effort made is because, you know, when you're, when you, when you have power, it's very attractive to the parties. And if you looked at just the registration, there's 100,000 more Democrats than Republicans in Nassau County, yet we are one seat away right now of the Republican Party having supermajority, it's called, which is having 13 votes, which would be enough to bond, like borrow money, without having the other party do any types of checks and balances. I'm a big believer of checks and balances. It's Jeffersonian, they don't trust government. I'm, I'm not. I think that, that the districts, redistricting is important because it has to be one vote per, you know, per person. You have to have an even amount of representation, but the amount of effort that has been made to basically gerrymander various groups to the fact that it's just the results in itself show it. And I'm here to tell you, I don't support supermajority on either side, Democratic or Republican. I think it's a very bad idea, and I'm honestly, I don't want to say terrified, but I am, of what could happen if there's no checks and balances, especially when it comes to borrowing. And just real quick about the lawsuit, supposedly there was a question as to whether or not the data involved off-year or on-year, and that's where the lawsuit is now, but I haven't heard any recent updates regarding it.
All right, Ms. Deridge Witten, what are the most pressing problems that you plan to address as a member of the Nassau County government?
Well, I along with my colleagues, you know, we, we're all worried about, you know, I, we all have kids, and we all worry about the future, and I think one of them is environmental. I wrote a piece of legislation that, first of all, one that requires the government building put solar panels on. We haven't even had a hearing on it. I also wrote legislation, which did pass unanimously, that banned fracking pellets. It's fracking wastewater that the companies don't know what to do with the fracking wastewater, so they found a way to dehydrate them, and they said, oh, guess what? It melts snow. Well, they melt snow because they're radioactive, and believe it or not, various municipalities use these pellets to melt snow. So I found out about it, and then we did a lot of research over summer. I had a couple of really good interns, and our piece of legislation banned it from ever being used in Nassau County. And what was interesting is the five boroughs, and I believe it was like 18 different counties in New York, adopted our piece of legislation verbatim, which I thought was a good sign. So I only answered one. Environmental is one.
Okay, so I'm going to agree again. Environmental is the number-one issue, but my environmental issue really has to deal with community character and the sustainability of the communities within the, within Nassau County to, to maintain what they're doing. Also, I would look towards advanced sewer districts to make sure that districts that don't have sewers at this time would, such as Seacliff and Glenwood Landing, that, you know, that basically drain into Hempstead Harbor. And I think advancement of sewer lines within those communities to allow people to hook up to those sewers and reduce the amount of nitrogen loading to Hempstead Harbor would be a huge benefit, as well as infrastructure improvements to stormwater drainage in those areas, as well as stormwater drainage in the South Shore where they have a bunch of problems because they're so low-lying that when tidal surges come in, the tidal actually goes through the drainage lines and up into the streets, which causes additional flooding. I think there are engineering solutions that could be put into place. Of course, this costs money, which would take some state or federal funding to, to advance that.
Mr. Salzer, what do you feel you can do to improve upon Ms. Deridge Witten's record? And Ms. Deridge Witten, why do you believe you can do a better job than Mr. Salzer?
You're going to make this contentious? So I do not know all of Julia's record, I have to admit. So I can't really talk specifically to what her record was and what I would do better about it. I really don't, as I said in my beginning statement, that I'm not really here to advance some sort of program. I'm really here to put forward more of a, oh, let's call it a common sense approach to some of the chaos that goes on now. So I can't speak specifically to what's going on there. That's my only, that's my only answer to that.
Well, just, I had to go back to a question before because the word sewer was mentioned, and I always end up talking about sewers for some reason. It's a really good line at parties. But I'm, was proud to say that, that we have started sewer-ing Seacliff. We, we were We were able to obtain over $2 million to sewer the main street, the main commercial street in Seacliff. And I know a lot about sewers now, but there's a gravity line that goes from the corner of that down to the sewage treatment plant, which is in Glen Cove. And a gravity line is good because you can hook up other streets. So we have already hooked up a good portion of of that area. Seacliff, actually Nassau County, 90% of it is sewered and out of the 10% that isn't, 90% is in District 11. So I really, that's been our goal, but I really have worked hard with the village administrations and we're on our way to searing Seacliff. I I think, you know, people ask me sometimes like why I'm running again and I I want to say that I have a few more projects that I would really like to see come to completion. I feel that I've I feel that I've met the needs of many different aspects of my community, especially like Manor Haven. We really redid Manor Haven. It was a $6 million project. That place has turned around completely. I have an excellent staff. Tony Kessel is my legislative aide. We we answer every phone call. We really put our time in. I'm out like five, six nights a week and, you know, it's my full time job and I love it. And, you know, I am very appreciative of the opportunity to have it.
Thank you. Ms. Deridge Witten, what allocations in the county budget do you think should be reduced or eliminated? And what would you increase?
Well, it's interesting. Every time we do the budget, there's something that comes up and that's the Department of Social Services and everything that really pertains to kids and and seniors and drug addiction and after school programs. Those programs are not mandated. So every year, they're very vulnerable and every year they are the first ones on the table to be cut. It's it's pretty arduous. So as far as communicating, we do have a newsletter that I do quarterly and it goes to every household and I really put a lot of time and effort into it. It does update everyone on different projects, different, different legislation, all sorts of issues. Takes a lot of work and I'm always happy when someone says they read it and not just threw it out. We also, you know, we have our information is always available. There is, I agree with you with the county website that it could be updated more regularly. But my contact information is there and again, if anyone ever has any questions or I would love to, you know, I'm always interested in hearing what constituents see, think, if any problems you know of. I talked about sewers, I got a call that there was a backup and I was right with the DPW commissioner, so it it was addressed like within five minutes, which was pretty amazing. So again, I think we really do try to be out there a lot. It's really, it's it's a pretty demanding schedule, but I'm always open to any suggestions and I hope everyone feels free to contact me if there's ever anything.
How much time on average do you expect to spend or do you spend on this job? And what's the minimum time per week that seems like it's enough?
So I no longer have another job. This is my full time job and it really is seven days a week. And I'm out, I try to limit it to like four to five nights a week. The hearings can go, Monday and Tuesday, we had a budget and a committee hearings. I think I know I was in 20 hours of meetings within the first two days of my week. And those meetings are pretty long at times, but it's all what you what you put into it. And I know some legislators that have other full time jobs and they seem to be able to manage it, but I really feel that it requires full time. Even though it's not a full time job, you only get half credit, but half, whatever they call it, half credit. So but I treat it as a full time job and even if we go away for a weekend or something, I always have my phone, I always have my emails, I'm always checking everything to my husband's chagrin. But so hourly, it's hard to say, but I can tell you, it's a real commitment if you want to do it right. And I really feel that that's what it takes.
So I do have a full time job. So I work as an environmental scientist for PSEG at the time being. The concept is that these committee meetings, which start sometimes in the afternoon, one, I believe.
Focus is before.
Yeah, before. So I'm, my, my plan is to take a lot of vacation time to attend these meetings. These are late night things that go on for a lot of time and luckily, these days with the advent of cell phones and other, you know, media for contacting, I feel that that can be handled through the day. Also, my wife of over 25 years is a real estate broker and her job takes her from whatever time it is, six in the morning until midnight sometimes. And so we, you know, we're kind of used to the fact that long days are there and they're going to stay with us. And luckily, well luckily, both are children out of the house, so I don't have to actually deal with that kind of concept anymore. So I believe that the job can be done expeditiously.
Mr. Stalzer, the current administration has done just about nothing regarding the reassessment of our homes in Nassau County. Why?
Oh, so, that's a good question. The assessment going through, the former county executive actually was trying to do something with the assessment, but she did more of an evaluation rather than an assessment of properties. So the current reassessment aspect is that if you grieve your properties, you're going to get sort of a reduction in your property tax liabilities. And if you don't grieve it, you probably pay more than you're supposed to do or you pay more than your neighbor who did grieve them, right? If you have the same valuation of your house. I do not know the intricacies of what that is, why it hasn't happened. And that would be something that I would definitely look at as because, generally because I think there should be a more fair assessment of everybody's house on a house by house basis. And with the technologies we have today, I think that could be accomplished.
Yeah, but right now, we don't have an assessor in Nassau County and our role is frozen. So it's it's in a very precarious situation because the longer you don't look at the role and you don't fix the role, the worse the scenario is going to be. It was it was frozen under the Mingano administration and now it's frozen under the Blakeman administration. Laura Curran did try to, she addressed it. I agree that it was done in a way that I didn't agree with. It was a reevaluation, which meant they took each school district. So each school district was still remaining whole, but some neighborhoods, it was called the neighborhood factor, some neighborhoods went up, some neighborhoods went down. But when you looked at different places like Seacliff, it didn't make sense. Some of the homes on the water went down and some of the homes near DPW went up. It just, I don't think it was done right. We have put money in, I voted to, we hired actually a company that is supposed to be very good at doing the home by home evaluation. So we we approved that contract, they're not being used. We also bought simple things like drones, believe it or not, that can fly over homes and do the basic outdoor scan. It's not inside, but it's outside, so you could tell if there's an addition or new siding, really just by drones. So I think we absolutely have to go house by house and get a good role, but the first thing you have to do is hire an assessor, which we do not have in Nassau County. It's unbelievable to me. I don't even know how they're signing off on the roles because if you read the, you know, the charter, it's supposed to be, the role is supposed to be signed off by a confirmed assessor.
How can we attract more businesses to Nassau County? Ms. Deridge.
Okay, sorry. Listen, it's always a big, a big challenge. I found, I was very, found it very satisfying in Manor Haven Boulevard. Once we, once we really cleaned up the sidewalks and the road and we addressed the parking situation and the flooding situation, there has been a tremendous growth with businesses in Manor Haven. I see the same thing with Glen Cove. We're really, we're constantly working to try to bring new businesses in and Seacliff is is doing pretty well. They could always do better. But one thing that I really think should be pushed on for this county executive is the 300, almost 300 million, I think it's 260, $100 million that's sitting in his account, which he's touting as his high reserve fund. That money could really go out and help small businesses. Any business that was in existence during COVID is qualifies for grants and it's up to us really to give them out. We gave out so many of them. I worked with the bid in Port Washington. We went door to door and gave everyone the information. People didn't trust the process because they thought it was a loan. It wasn't, it was a grant. And then one Italian restaurant in Glen Cove was so surprised that they got the check, they couldn't believe it when I walked in, they were so excited. But it was, that's what that money should be used for, to help our businesses that are here already that are struggling and not sitting in an account. And as far as attracting new businesses, I think the more we we work on our infrastructure and our downtowns, the more businesses will want to come in.
I agree with the fact that infrastructure is very important for businesses to push forward. So throughout areas of Nassau County, to attract businesses not outside District, Legislative District 11 is, South Shore, I think, has seen a lot of businesses be under distress and or go out of business. And that's because of infrastructure and flooding issues and and those kind of things that really make it difficult for them to push forward. So if I wasn't, I didn't know about the grant money, but I think that's a great idea to have have available to different businesses, particularly small businesses within within the county, to keep them vibrant and and moving forward.
Mr. Stalzer, overdose deaths are increasing in Nassau County. What can you do if elected county legislator to address this? Or is this something that individuals should do for themselves?
Well, both. So I really do believe that the pandemic was a big contributor to individuals' despair, if you were, or whatever other psychological things that might, they might be going through that caused them to go into these mind altering substances, whether it be opioids or alcohol, a whole bunch of different aspects that are going on with that. Those things really have to be handled. You know, it's a, it's a societal issue. So what the government can do is provide, I think, assistance to the individuals and those organizations, which can help those individuals, rehabilitation centers and other things like that, that these people really need and to give them an avenue to get there. The opioid thing is more, I think, a problem because of the fentanyl that's being put into like, I guess, everything now. And, you know, which is really a killer to everybody, you know, a first, person who first tries this drug, you know, they're going to die because there's fentanyl in it they can't handle. So I think the county funding for organizations that can help those individuals is important. I also believe individuals really have to take a responsibility for themselves, although if you're a drug addict, that's not always viable.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is, the opioid money that was awarded to the county came from the pharmaceutical companies. We received 70, I think it was $72 million approximately. And it's not a grant, it's not, it's not refunding, it's money that we can use to address this issue. We're also expecting another 30 million from CVS in the near future. We have a hospital right down on Hempstead Turnpike, which is almost, it's almost bankrupt, Nassau Community Medical Center. There are, I forget, I'm trying to get the exact number of floors that are vacant right now. We have the opportunity to take some of that money, not all of it, but some of it, and really making the state of an art rehabilitation center, which is so needed right now. There were times when I get calls from parents and we've had one at two in the morning and I was downstairs trying to find a bed and there were no beds available. So some people that want treatment, when they, when you get them, when you have a child, I have such respect for these parents that deal with these children, but when you have that window, you need to have the services available. And I would strongly suggest using a good portion of that money to to use Nassau Community College, Nassau Community Medical Center, and they could keep them there for longer than the 28 days that insurance pays for. The other thing is I submitted legislation that would require that fentanyl strips be placed in any Narcan strips. The current administration will not even hold a hearing on it. These strips cost a dollar each. Think of how many we could buy. They're not, they, if you rub it against a pill and the odds of it detecting, if there's any fentanyl in that pill, is almost 90%. It's not perfect, but it is the only tool we have. And unfortunately, as Mr. Styes said, a lot of people are overdosing that because they want to or they even have a major drug issue, it's just they ran into fentanyl and it's the only tool we have.
Thank you. We're going to get to a final question. We hear stories about Nassau County jail or jails being overcrowded, particularly for young arrestees. How should this be addressed? Yes.
Well, I go to jail quite a lot and I always love to tell my kids I'm going to jail today. My husband's also very proud of me when I do that. First of all, it's not overcrowded anymore. There aren't as many inmates there, but the ones that are there are usually there. Most people don't even know we have a jail. We have a jail in East Meadow. And the difference between jail and prison is jail is up to a year, prison is over a year and they usually are sent somewhere upstate. I have been working on this jail for the whole time I've been ranking on on the Public Safety Committee. I'm happy to say it's gotten a lot better as far as we we fixed the HVAC system. They, they really, it sounds simple, but they they initiated programs that, just the color of the cells, the cleanliness of it, I've been up and down that building. It's really improving. There are, there are these, now there are these classes that the inmates can take that, it's kind of like AA where they're sort of, they're sort of run by the inmates, but they're overseen by other, you know, by the correction officers. It's really come a long way, I'm proud to say. They have church there. I've gone to their Christmas Eve and it was, just real quick, but it was in a Spanish mass that I went to because I missed the other one. And they all come in and they're all so tough, but once they started playing the Christmas songs, you just saw them starting to cry and starting to, so I think, you know, improving services, improving, improving any kind of help we can give them. And I also am a big proponent of the correction officers getting whatever kind of mental health help that they need also.
So jail inmates, I'm going to assume are also going to be part of this drug epidemic that are, is going through every community on the island and the state and the country. So it's good to hear that that's what is happening there and I think that's a good aspect. It's also nice to hear that the population has decreased some, I guess is what, which is really good because we don't need a Rikers Island in Nassau County. And, you know, other than that, I really don't know enough about the jail situation to comment about what's happening within the jail. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. All right, before we take closing statements, I want to remind everyone that a- that Election Day is Tuesday, November 7, at your regular voting place. Early voting again begins on Saturday, October 28, and runs through Sunday, November 5. A recording of this forum will be available on the League of Women Voters of Port Washington and Hasset YouTube within 24 hours. And please mark your calendars for October 19, when we will hold a forum here again for the receiver of taxes and town supervisor. Okay. So now to closing statements. Please offer applause to both candidates for their willingness to answer your questions tonight together on stage after both candidates, after each candidate's closing statement. You'll have two minutes. Ms. Dorjewitten?
Well, thank you again to the League and everyone for coming out. And I want to say just a little bit about myself. I probably should have mentioned this in the beginning, but I'm married, and I have three daughters and one stepson. I grew up from Manhattan, but my parents came out to Long Island when I was young. So I've been in the area for almost all of my life. I went to Hofstra. And personally, my oldest daughter was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes, and that's been my passion. Actually, your wife comes to my dinner, and we've had dinners for 17 years, and we've raised over $1 million, which is my, it's really part of who I am. And, you know, sometimes when you've kind of had a few challenges in your own life, it prepares you to handle constituents. I was also a single mom for 10 years, so I really understand a lot of what these people go through. And I know, I know how close to the line a lot of people live. I also believe in institutional knowledge. It's taken me a long time to understand how this county works. There are so many different integral, you know, departments and this and that, and it takes a long time to understand most of it. And I think it's an asset to have that experience. And again, it is my only job. It's my full-time job. It's a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week job, and I enjoy it. I feel very blessed to have had the opportunity to serve this, this district, and I hope to continue for, for the future that I can see. Thank you.
So instead of talking about how great I am, I'm going to give you guys a quick story that I've heard from somebody else, so I'm assuming it's true. This is about Tip O'Neill. Some of you may remember him as the Speaker of the House way back when, but he was running for office councilman in Boston from his Irish district in Boston, and he lost twice. And he ran the third time and won. And he was coming home after the celebration of his winning to be councilman, and it passed this next-door neighbor's house, and Mrs. O'Leary was, I made that name up, by the way. She was sitting outside on her porch, and Tip O'Neill goes to Mrs. O'Leary. He goes, "I won. Aren't you proud of me?" And she goes, "Yes, I'm very proud of you." And he goes, "Did you vote for me?" And she said, "No." And Tip O'Neill says, "Why did you not vote for me? Your younger daughter babysat for me when I was a kid. Your daughter now, your older daughter is dating my brother, and we've been neighbors for 20 years. And, you know, why didn't you vote for me?" And she said, "Well, you never asked." So the moral of the story is, I'm asking for your vote. Thank you very much.
Candidates, the League appreciates your willingness to participate in this forum, and you've answered the questions thoughtfully and candidly, and we appreciate you, your commitment, and salute you for your, for running to serve in public office. And we would also like to thank the audience for their very thought-provoking questions. It's really helping further democracy, and we appreciate you all for coming.